Four to work. Would you like to do roll call?
I'd love to.
Mr. Albright. Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Bruderly.
Here.
Mrs. Grederex.
Here.
Ms. Angus.
Here.
Mr. Lunding.
Here.
Mrs. Wora.
Here.
Mr. Don.
Here.
Mr. Patel. I believe Mr. Albright is joining us by the zoom.
Yeah, please do not participate.
Right.
Because the law will still be here.
Okay.
You can listen in.
Okay. So next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I know this is the board of education heard the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion for the approval of the agenda? No discussion, we'll put it to a vote, all for his favor. All those opposed. The agenda passes. Okay, now we're moving on to C, which is public participation. So. We had a robust. Public participation on Monday. We're going to have people raise their hands and we will see how many people we have and then try to keep it to thirty, but if we need to extend it, then we'll be fine, but people will be limited to five minutes. So if you're in the middle of the sentence.
So anyone who would like to participate, if you could raise your hand at this time, so we can figure out how much time we can do per speaker. So far, we have two raised hands, three. Okay, we have four participants with their hands raised, so we're gonna go first. Anastasia. Whoops. Sorry, Michael, I clicked twice. I don't know what I just did. Anastasia, if you could unmute.
Hello, my name is Anastasia Floro and I will be attending.
Oh, hold on, timeout. I'm not sure the sound's working in the boardroom. Give it one second.
Okay.
Can you just mirror the zoom? Side of the TV? Yeah. Give it one second, Anastasia, we're trying to get the.
Alright.
Trying to get the sound to work in the room.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me in the room now? Perfect, alright. Anastasia, it's all yours.
Alright. Hello, my name is Anastasia Floro and I will be attending Mill Creek this year. I would like to say that due to my age, I am not vaccinated and I will not be able to be fully vaccinated for a small part of the school year. I really do want to go back to school, but I also want to feel safe. So I think masks really should be required to prevent the spread of COVID. I don't want to be afraid that the unmasked student next to me might be carrying COVID. I also want to be able to talk to my friends and I would feel more comfortable if we were masked. As a student with anxiety, I believe that masks would also help students with mental illnesses and make them feel safer in schools. This will prevent sickness from spreading at school and if a student needs to remove their mask temporarily, Dexter Schools could accommodate for them. Masks are a really important tool that should be used and they will help stop the spread of COVID until everyone can be vaccinated. Despite my minor fear of shots, I am quite excited to be vaccinated as it will allow me to have a bit more freedom in my life and allow me to live a normal life instead of staying at home twenty-four seven. I would like to thank Dexter for letting me speak. As a minor, I often feel left out when it comes to things that can impact my life. I love how Dexter Schools has allowed students to speak and I feel heard when it comes to topics like this.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we have Michael, let me move you over. Not sure what's happened, I tried to. There we go, Michael, I think I have you all set now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. First off, I want to thank the Dexter School Board for their work and for considering our comments. My wife and I have a son who will be attending kindergarten in three weeks. For his safety as well as the safety of all the children attending in-person school, including Anastasia who just spoke, we request the board choose either option two, two A, or four for its COVID mitigation strategy for the school year. I attended Monday's meeting as well and I admit, I am disappointed the board is now considering two additional options for its mitigation strategy as they would make children like my son more vulnerable. My son has early onset asthma, which first manifested when he was two years old and had to be hospitalized for being unable to breathe. As my wife and I discovered that day and have confirmed again and again through the years, one of the triggers for our son's asthma is respiratory illness. Despite being on maintenance medication, his asthma can flare anytime he gets a cold or a respiratory infection. Each time our son gets sick, my wife, who's been a nurse for fourteen years, wonders whether she'll need to use all her experience and skills to save him if we can't get him care in time. Each time our son gets sick, I wonder whether we'll relive the night. I drove him to the hospital because he couldn't breathe, hearing his quick little gasp for air coming from the backseat and listening to my wife sitting with him and counting his breaths per minute as he edged closer and closer to pulmonary arrest. My son is too young to be vaccinated. Additionally, at his annual physical, his physician indicated vaccines for children under twelve may not be available until Thanksgiving. Experts in diseases have called this phase of the pandemic a pandemic of the unvaccinated. As in-person schooling has started in other parts of the country, we've already seen that a lot of illnesses can happen in a matter of days, let alone months, among children. In a recent ten-question survey of twenty-eight infectious disease experts conducted by STAT News, only one question received a unanimous answer of no. That was whether the experts would send their unvaccinated children to school without a mask. At this point, our children's best defense against illness is to wear, all wear masks to decrease the spread of the virus. A theme from Monday's meeting was that masks have allegedly harmed our children's mental well-being. That line of thought completely ignores the real issues harming our children's mental well-being. Children are afraid of catching a highly contagious and dangerous illness, the long-term effects of which are still unknown. Children are angry they can't go to all places or see all the families and friends they could prior to the pandemic. Children are sad because they feel isolated. And children are frustrated, as are many adults, because they see people not only refusing to do small things necessary to protect them and end the pandemic, but in many cases, fighting all those efforts, thus prolonging the pandemic. Wearing masks is not harming our children's mental health. Learning how little their well-being matters to some is. Another theme that came up during the last meeting was that masks somehow infringe on people's personal rights. The discussion reminded me of a saying my fully vaccinated father is fond of. Your rights end where my nose begins. Rights are not unlimited and choices have consequences. We have speed limits to ensure people drive safely and hold people accountable when they choose to drive recklessly and endanger others. We require doctors, lawyers, nurses, and other professionals to be licensed to ensure basic competence and accountability and to protect people from those who would choose to practice without licensure and endanger others. A person choosing to ignore steps to prevent the spread of COVID does not have the right to infect other people. Requiring masks does not infringe on children's rights. Rather, it's a step to protect the health of our children, especially those who cannot be vaccinated because of their age, because they're allergic to components in the vaccine, or because their immune systems are compromised. Requiring masks is also a step to preserve our children's right to attend school in person for the entire school year without fear of being infected by a classmate, teacher, or staff member. For these reasons, my family respectfully asks this board to choose an option that will mandate masks and do the most to protect our children. Those options are option two, option two-way, or option four. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Joshua.
Hey, thank you, I'll, in the interest of brevity, I'll try to be short and represent both my sons as best as I can. I did give them an option to talk tonight and both of them were shy, they were nervous. So I have, my oldest son is eleven, he's gonna be a sixth grader next year at Mill Creek and my youngest son is gonna be a second grader and he has spent more time in quarantine and at home than in a school setting. And he's communicated the frustrations of that. The one topic that I wanted to touch on was the, the topic of mental well-being. I thought of President Obama's quote a while ago and he said, "One of the number one problems we have in this country is that there's just a massive disagreement of the facts." And I know that this has been one of the narratives, regardless of what side of the fence you stand on politically, where we disagree on a lot of facts and we quote physicians and nurses to make sure that it paints the right kind of light on the narrative depending on which way we lean. I don't want to be biased at all, I just want to represent my children. They, I think that they strongly would push for an option three. I'm not gonna pretend to understand what it's like for other people with their children and other needs that they have, but as I understand it, if there is a very real concern for child safety, there is an option to do homeschooling the entire time. My boys are, are healthy, I'm married to a neurologist for the University of Michigan. She oftentimes will cite her medical opinion and it'll be different than some of the facts that I see stated in open forums like this. I'm not trying to pick a fight, but I get frustrated when I feel like we use children to prove a point instead of actually doing what's best for our children. And so my goal is not to have a false moral altruism, but just say my genuine response is my boys would like number three and they would like to return to some semblance of normalcy. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you. Okay. We lost one of the original people, put up their hands. We still have a little time, so Javier.
Hey, sorry, this is actually Andrea, it's my husband's name.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was, I lost audio on the other device. Thank you for calling on me and giving me this opportunity. I. I have been struggling for the last, and Dr. Timis, I'm not sure if you received my email. I kind of took a guess at your email address and sent you a note with all of this, but we've been struggling with, you know, how to manage all of this for the last year with our kids and we're incredibly fortunate in that we moved to Michigan just as the pandemic was starting from Texas and we have been so grateful to be in this school district where we had an opportunity to keep our kids safe during this pandemic and to utilize the remote learning options that you guys offered last year. It has not been easy to do, I, I, you know, our youngest is six, he just turned seven and, you know, doesn't have the attention span to just sit and pay attention on Zoom. So we have been turning him over to my mom all week, every week during the school year to let her help him and we'll be doing that again this year utilizing the remote option. But that's hard on us to give him up for so much time and when we received the email yesterday saying that we will have to have remote the entire year even once we are able to vaccinate him, I just. Sorry, that's, it's, it's, this is not an easy situation. We have lost one child already and don't want to risk losing another. And I feel like we're being asked to make kind of an impossible choice with that, especially given that if we do send them in, we're not even sure you're going to require masks for kids under the age of twelve. And I have friends in Texas who have kids who have caught this virus. Their, their children's hospitals are at capacity right now. So it is a real risk and it is very scary for parents like us who have already said goodbye and buried one child and don't want to do that again. So I realize that it's a personal choice, but I just, I want some flexibility because I do want to send them into school once they're vaccinated. It's not, you know, other parents have raised the mental health issues and that is a concern especially for our older child who has struggled for the last year with this, but we want to keep him safe, but also send him in once he's vaccinated because we intend to do that as soon as it's possible for them. They're under the age of twelve and can't do that now. So I just want to be their voice and try and find the safest situation I can for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to share something that I emailed to the board and to Dr. Timis. Just so you know, our family's personal situation. We have two children who are vaccinated, one who is too young to be vaccinated and we would like our kids to wear masks. We would also like everyone that they are around to wear masks just for their personal safety. And one thing that has worked really well at our church is having different services where people could either choose to wear masks or masks are required. And so the option that I would like to propose is that at least for K through eight, that be an option for the classroom. I think that that would give the most families what they're looking for and would probably prevent people from pulling out to do virtual so that they could have their child in a classroom that best meets their needs. So I just wanted to present that option that for classrooms, I, I realized it wouldn't work at the high school where they're mixing up a lot. And I know it's probably a little bit more administrative work, but last year we did a lot of administrative work and I think that that could be a viable option to have mask optional classrooms and mask mandatory classrooms to meet the needs of people on both sides of this argument. So I just wanted to share that idea.
Thank you. Connie.
Hey, this is Kevin Creach, my Connie's account, but I didn't have much extra to add from the other night. The only thing I'm thinking is, you know, this has been a very emotional issue for everyone. I, I've heard some politics on the side. You know, I, I'm a big option three guy and, and that's where I'd like to see the school go, but if we really wanted to take some, a lot of the debate and a lot of the pressure off the board and a lot of the community, why wouldn't we follow the guidelines given to us by the Washtenaw County Health Department? Those are valid, if they change, then we'll change with them. It gives us a solid footing to stand on and it's based on, you know, the data and the analysis that they're doing. So I implore the board to, to follow those recommendations by the Washtenaw County Health Department and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Teresa, that'll be our last speaker. Teresa, can you share your last name, please?
Yeah, Bixler, B as in boy.
Okay.
I X L E R. So I, I thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a part of a family that does have an immunocompromised person and so we are wanting to choose what we believe is safest for us at this time, which is virtual. And I really appreciate the fact that Dexter District is giving a virtual option. And I understand that there may not be as many virtual families this year compared to last year. However, I do think that if we are somehow still able to connect the students to a Dexter teacher, even if they just meet weekly one time for a short period to see a few of the other students who are in a similar situation as them in regards to being virtual, even if it's a mix like an anchor or beacon of different grade levels, I think it would just help them not feel like they're alone in what situation that they are in because I know there are other families who are also choosing virtual. And so my suggestion is to just somehow still make them feel included, a part of the Dexter District instead of even more isolated during this difficult time. Thank you.
Alright, that is all for the remote participation, I'm gonna bring my computer back in.
Oh, where do you want me to, like, turn around and look at the camera? Are you? Oh, okay. I'll talk to you. Oh, gosh, okay, I got you. Okay. It was really difficult to understand this, like, okay. So anyway, so hi, my name is Carissa Keller, I'm a parent here in the community. Thank you in advance for your time. After Monday's meeting, it is very apparent that Dexter is divided on the issues of mask wearing and other personal health-related decisions. For example, the COVID-19 shot. In my humble opinion, I believe the only item community members can all agree on is that COVID-19 is a sinister virus that has affected and impacted so many people in so many ways around the globe over the last eighteen months. However, the focus this week, right here, right now, is a local one. COVID-19 has existed in our Dexter community over the last eighteen months and still exists today. Over the summer, with COVID-19 and all the other hundreds of viruses out there still in existence, people resumed almost back to normal life. Camps, sports, grad parties, teens hanging out at the lake, bonfires, even summer school programs ran with the allowances of freedom of choice with regards to mask wearing and other health-related decisions, all with no incident. Today, I checked out the washtenaw.org site and I found the information. Thirty-six cases, three hospitalizations, zero deaths as of eight eighteen twenty-one. This is all of Washtenaw County and Dexter is but a small piece of that puzzle. How can anyone in good faith force masking and not giving choice with this information readily available? Furthermore, the COVID-19 shot is a personal issue between parent and child. This leadership team has zero business in interfering with that decision-making process. While every person and family in the community has a unique story and situation, I find it even more crucial to implore that freedom of choice is awarded to students with regards to mask wearing and other health-related decisions. Those who want to wear a mask, do it, do it freely. Those who choose not to, do so freely as well. Tonight, you here have the opportunity to make a decision that will either benefit or further crush Dexter's youth. Given the high level of public input and diverse options, there was a group of community members that administered a survey. It was shared as widely possible given a short timeframe, like ours. These limitations notwithstanding, the input is valuable and deserves to be considered. If this board actually values public input and will use it in your decision-making, I think you owe it to us public to administer an anonymous district-wide survey. I'm gonna pass out the survey that, that we just did, some community members. If public input is not playing a role in the decision-making, then I would respectfully ask that it is stated on the record here tonight. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
So we move on to our discussion items, which are back to school COVID-19 litigation.
I guess it's been a lot of time, trying to figure out how we think. Recently tonight, I'd like to draw some kind of giant frame to the discussion. Like I said, I appreciate the respectful, insightful, thoughtful, and caring parents. Everyone has the same goals, get back to school full-time, save your students, and staff. I think that one thing that's really important to think about is to acknowledge how much we already have agreed on. Here are the different sides, but in reality, a very large part of what we're being asked to prove tonight, we all agree on masking on buses, all visitors masked, and the masking required for all students and staff is lower substantial time, hence we're at. So in reality, I think, is that as we look at open schools, we're already all in agreement on how we want open schools. I don't think I've heard anybody factor that other freedom of choice notion. So what we're really, I think, I'm working at tonight is deciding on what response and guidelines are best or most appropriate when and if the, the levels become lower by. And the reality is that whatever we decide tonight on that, I suspect we're gonna end up revisiting at such time as the levels would be reduced. I think so far that we think we're gonna do it's new data and it's revisited, so I think that that's extremely likely. So I think that the real decisions that we need to make tonight are projecting in the future on how we want to have guidelines in place, requirements for the low level and for the moderate level and everything else I think we've already agreed on. At least it was helpful to me to kind of recognize this, this big problem is why someone's that big and that. Trying to, I have a tough time sorting out all the different combinations of things. And if we really figure out what we think is appropriate for low and what we think is appropriate for moderate, moderate, we will have the option we want, whether it's already listed or not. So anyway, thank you. I do have a sheet because Dr. Timis passed out. I do have sheet because Dr. Simmons passed out the identity involvement in earlier today. It's kind of a summary of the different possible actions and what responses are uh for the different levels. And I think one of the things that we've been discussing, and I've heard so far, people may have applied what they wanted for the levels, but we really can't discuss how response to different levels has been varied. It's people applying what option they would like. Who knows what part of the option was really driving?
Do you have some phone calls or? Public participation or not? Sorry, we talk about applying, we talk about the public participation.
Yes. No, I don't think I've heard.
Right, no.
And people say I like this section, that option which implied something, but I don't know which of the four levels was driving.
Right. I just for the record, um if people listen, I put on one, I put option three on here. Uh I also put option two eight, uh just because I think it's important to, where the vote goes, some community members wanted that option. So that's why it's on here. You know, I'm not gonna say on the vote yet, but it's uh it's on here. So two A is actually a stricter version of two. Three is a looser version of all, so.
So process-wise, the other night, we talked about using a similar process to kind of guide the discussion. I used for candidate interviews, so I projected it on the screen. Uh what we would do is have each board member, I have sticky notes under your table. And you would identify your top three options. It doesn't have to be in any particular order. And then I'll type it up so it's public, so everybody sees what everybody shows. And then we discuss the options that if anything, they gotta at least three, was mentioned three times, we would discuss. And then the second round, we would narrow down to two. And then we would, depending on how the discussion goes, go into uh the president at that point, if we go into the action part of the agenda and then decide what we're gonna do.
Before I am able to start voting, I have a question about consequences and how can the forcibility of whatever policy we put in place, I guess, you know, are we gonna make up? If if we do say that mask wear practices wouldn't be a dress code, this is, so I want to understand what the consequences of our decisions will be on the students.
Yeah, we would handle it similar to how we handle all the other sort of other issues, but we I, what we would do first is we work with the student family if there is an issue. And generally, we can both resolve or resolve.
And then the other day, we talked about um the potential mental health consequences for some students that have anxiety about wearing masks. So we've eliminated some of extra support. And I was just wondering whether we were able to offer that as a district. Extra counseling, extra support for the like.
We can, we'll have an asterisk built in. There would be a physician's exemption that existed already. A physician could write an exemption based on medical need, which that would work. We would go through that process. There's a format, depending on what's decided, there's a format and process. President.
Well, I'm still, I'm still looking around for other.
Do we want to discuss before we? Yeah, if you want to talk, go for it.
Yeah, this is, I didn't know what was my voting. Oh, yeah, no, we're in, we're in discussion.
We're discussing. We're just using this as a process to help move the discussion along, but if you can just say what you want to say.
We sort of focus on like, see what discussion here is on that. Over the globe, because there's not much else to discuss.
Well, I think.
I disagree. I think.
The levels. The, I don't see any reason to discuss substantial or high.
Options.
I think the options, yeah.
But if you decide what you want to do, on low and moderate, the option creates itself. We're not required to pick one. It'd be hard to be there if they have.
Yes.
So I have comments. Can I make one?
Yeah, okay. We'll just start there. So I know last, last, the other day, people could not hear me, so I'm actually going to step closer to the
computer if I actually have some comments. This is what my brain was doing this morning, so I wrote it out. Um so over the last week, and most especially during the last forty-eight hours, the board has received an enormous amount of email and outreach. I want to start by saying that it is clear that this community has two common goals. We all want our children to be able to be in school full-time five days a week this year. We also all want our children to be able to be successful while in this environment. I have personally agonized over the best way to represent the community on this issue of masking. It is clear that there are polar opposite opinions on this issue among the families we serve. But it is also clear that the opinions expressed by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the Centers for Disease Control, and the American Academy of Pediatrics are in complete alignment with comments and opinions expressed by our own local experts, physicians, psychologists, epidemiologists, and virologists. As I said on Monday night, my responsibility on this board is to ensure the lowest-risk environment for our children to attend school. My goal is to ensure that all of our students receive the highest quality education they can, which means spending the most time that they can in classrooms with their teachers this year. I have nephews who are in their third week of school in Georgia. I have nieces in Ohio and friends in Texas. I have followed news stories about school boards across the South who are reevaluating masking policies in light of hundreds, and in one Florida county, eight thousand students who are currently sick or in florentine. I'm seeing students home from school, schools going virtual, and even football seasons canceled. My number one priority is to structure the environment of our Dexter schools such that all viruses have the lowest chance of spreading, so that our students and teachers stay healthy and so that our buildings can remain open. As was also highlighted on Monday night, our schools are integrally tied to our community. We must protect our medically vulnerable and we must protect robust and healthy individual who won't know that COVID will be a devastating illness. We know that death is not the only bad outcome from a COVID infection, and we know that even asymptomatic and mild cases can result in long COVID. Further, we must honor the hard work that the medical community has been doing for the last year and a half by doing our part to reduce spread. The medical guidance on this issue is clear. Masking reduces risk, and universal masking reduces risk to the highest degree. The Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti School communities will be requiring universal K-12 masking, and I know that our community is strong enough to do it as well. The vast majority of our kindergartners can make it through a day with a mask, and so can the vast majority of our high schoolers. COVID brings with it many challenges. Masking is just one. Families and students have had an extreme number of stressors over the last year. Going back to school with increasing cases, a new highly contagious variant, and all of the feelings of loss associated with the need to have COVID mitigation measures present in our hallways again is stressful. As a board member, I will fully support increased resources and funding to offer support to our students who are struggling with these requirements. I want all of our children to feel excitement about the return to school, and I know that our social work and counseling staff, as well as the teachers and administrators, will be able to work through this year's unique circumstances with our students. Our community is experiencing a collective grief, and we are mourning the loss of the year and a half we thought we were going to have. This feeling is real and it is significant as we begin to mourn the loss of the normal experience that we all wanted for our kids this year. Families in our community have also experienced their own personal losses and challenges, both because of and in addition to COVID. As a board member, I feel that it's my responsibility to ensure the lowest-risk environment in which to bring back as many kids as possible into our buildings full-time. Thank you.
So. I got, I got some comments. Uh first of all, I'll thank everyone who called in and sent emails. Uh and before that, I, I did hear the floor, I was walking in and I had been here, but although you, I can't speak for all the board members, obviously, but I read them all and any of the links that you provided, till about 5:00 P.M. They came in after that, I didn't see any emails. Everyone's very passionate about the views, during the discussions and emails. And I first just want to appreciate everyone in the community being respectful and courteous and not turning it into, you know, a highlight reel for some news station. And I trust that the community, the people will be able to stay that way. No matter how the board votes tonight, people will be unhappy. That's just gonna be a fact of life. Uh and no one's, people are gonna be not liking the decision. And that's just, that's just part of life. We can't change that. Uh I would ask that people making decisions, I want, I'm making my decisions. I waited on medical science and studies, heavily on the current NIH, CDC, the Pediatric Association, and Michicano-Washington Studies. I also did some research recently, quickly, on the physiological, psychological, psychological effects of wearing masks from some of these same organizations. Overwhelming, the studies recommend wearing the mask for the inconvenience of not wearing one to protect students in the greater community. And furthermore, as I say yesterday, allows for the most effective way to keep our kids consistently in the classroom, the overwhelming majority. Yeah, I know a lot of stats were provided the other day, but I, I really don't think people were looking at the stats of the Delta variant because it does make a difference. Uh I fully conferred that last year with COVID, more kids were uh lower risk of the Delta variant. All you have to do is look at the statistics on the Delta variant and what's happening in some states where they're, also preventing, but it's uh they're they have low vaccination rates and we cannot, we cannot mandate vaccinations. And they also have low mask numbers. And it's, it's just incredible, the spike is going, it's impacting everybody. Even kid people who weren't active for, especially the. And lastly, we teach science in school. And we shall believe in science. If we don't believe in science, then we should drop it off the school system. We can move to cer- certain countries where they outlaw science and they just go off of fear. And I don't want to do that. If we believe in science, we believe what we're teaching our kids, then we should follow the science. People talk a lot about their personal liberties, freedom of choice. I spent twenty-eight years defending people's personal liberties, but personal liberties do not outweigh the right to engage with a population of workers. Especially those who do not have the choice to vaccinate. And those in the community are more suffer, more weak due to previous conditions, et cetera. And that's, if everyone wants to, I'm making my decision, that's kind of. I appreciate the survey, uh the emails getting into, pretty much, it's not, it's not a poll either, it wasn't a survey, but people who called in or sent emails, it's about three to one roughly, in favor of masking for the community. The survey, I, I appreciate it now, but I don't know how it's done, so I don't know. You better accurately, I'm not saying it wasn't inaccurate, I just, I just, I don't have.
We were just asking that the district do a survey. It was just, it was just done, just, just real quick and I, and I might not have articulated it, but we were asking, would this, would the um district do a community-wide survey? And if you're not willing to do it, then I guess that's very telling, or that public didn't, may or may not be, whatever. That's okay. So, let me say real quick, I understand the, the mix of feelings, comments, positions. I mean, my kids were at camp Dexter this, this summer, and the first week they wore masks, and then the masks lifted. It's freedom of living for my kids. They loved it. But when they took field trips, they wore masks on the bus, and they didn't argue about it. They said, okay, that's what it is. Um I, I guess, you know, I just keep going to a place that we just need stability and consistency for our kids. I cannot imagine going back to what we did last year where every single day was different and, you know, trying to, to struggle. So I don't know what, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is. I wish, I guess my answer would be, I wish that COVID never came to our shores, but obviously, that's not realistic and you can't say that. So our parents care for our kids. We care for the kids. And we took these positions because we want to put our children's education as the primary. So the question is, is how do we achieve that goal to get them the best education possible? And for me, the answer is in seat. My kids need to be in seat. They're, they're nine and seven, and they were not, they did the best they could, and teachers sure tried to do the best they could, and they really accomplished quite a bit on Zoom, but still, you know, I keep going back to, if, if we have to get them in seat and put a mask over their face, it gets them to be able to stay with their peers, with their teachers all year long. You know, I, I, again, I, I'm gonna consider the levels and everything like that, but I just think that's a very little thing to do to accommodate the greater good.
Guess I can offer my comments. I'm open to it. I, I agree with everything that I've heard so far, so I, I will repeat those. But I would like to thank the community for their input. We've heard from quite literally probably over a hundred people in the community, whether through public participation here, we're gonna see now such hours reading emails a day recently, as well as people in the community that I've spoken to. Quite confident that I've spoken to over a hundred people. It's a good sample size. Um I've also, I don't take this lightly. I, I work in the healthcare system, I'm not a doctor, I'm a lawyer for one of the largest healthcare systems in the state. And I've literally since January of twenty twenty, before anybody knew what COVID-19 was, I was already talking about it with our infectious disease doctors. And every single day since then, I have looked at stats, I have read articles, I have spoken to doctors, I've lived this every single day. I've helped advise our company and help put together policies and procedures that we share with the community around Detroit. I feel like I'm as well versed in this as you can be without being in the professional. And three weeks ago, I thought for sure we was going back with masks. And that, that was my wish. That was everybody's wish. But we're in a different world than we were three weeks ago. I can't look at, I was that, I was that obvious being inside of a mask. But we're in a Delta world now in the last few weeks. Delta changes the game, but it's red in the south. You can see the stats, you can see how it moves. It's, it's going to be here in the workforce very, very soon. It's already here. Cases are going up, we're already in substantial. And it is shutting down school districts already. Before we even begin, school districts that opened without mask requirements are shutting down. So that, I just wanted to give the context of where I come in from it. My biggest goal is to get kids back in school. We're way ahead of where we were last year. We're going back into schools for those that want to. And I think we need to do whatever we can to make sure that we keep kids in school with their classmates the whole year.
I have a couple of comments as well, and I agree with Ryan in terms of, I'm trying not to repeat things that have already been said, because I agree with any of the comments that have already been made. But we talked about one day, um you know, one of the first principles is to do no harm. And I understand that different people have a different definition of what harm means. Because there are, there have been many parents that have said that masks will harm their child. But in, in, I'm, one of my primary concerns is the mental health of children. And I see more harm occurring by not returning to school or by having to shut down or by having to change their routine than by wearing a mask. And so, you know, we've heard from many health professionals, Monday was the, the outpouring of of input has been extraordinary, from medical professionals to parents, you know, passionate stories that we've heard to cross the border. For the medical professionals, widely agree that masks do not cause harm, that being in isolation causes harm, and that's what I want to avoid. So I think that's really important. So again, just weighing the concerns of, of those who oppose the mask versus the scientifically proven benefits of the mitigation strategies and the layering efforts that, that are in effect within our community, it's important that we stick together for our children and and do whatever we can to keep them in school. So, sorry. Uh today, there was a doctor on NPR that was talking about the Delta variant and how quickly can move through a, a, a closed environment. And they were saying that with masks, it takes about a hundred and twenty hours to get. And they were saying that with masks, it takes about 120 hours to get through a building. Um, but if you don't have masks, it can be three hours. So that's a really important stat. I thought it was important for this doctor was from the Bonn Hospital talking about that today. That was kind of interesting to me. So, so for people who say, well, masks are effective, you know, that was an interesting stat that I heard. Uh, I do have a couple of concerns about enforcement and I think I've talked about that, you know, in terms of making sure it's in our policy, you know, what will happen. But then having teachers, you know, who's going to enforce this? Are teachers gonna have to be the mask police? You know, because we all know when we have policies like, for example, cell phones, it's really hard for a teacher to be teaching. They're always having to ask a kid to put their cellphone away. So they're always having to ask a kid to put their mask on or do, or I just, you know, I want the teachers to be able to teach. I want the children that are in the classroom to feel comfortable, that the policy is being enforced and just make sure that, you know, that's something that I, I don't know how that will, will work out and we'll figure that out. Um, and then I thought, I think that the, the discussion about if children are vaccinated and they're virtual now, I think we're going here, it's going very early tonight about that. You know, if we could be flexible with allowing kids to return to school after they're vaccinated, I'd love to see that. Um, and then if, if children are virtual, I don't know if parents would be comfortable, but if you could have outside gathering, you know, maybe once a week where they could come and see each other in a playground or something outside, just some sort of a way that they can actually see their friends. That was something that I, I wish that we had had last year when our kids were fully virtual, just so that they can know who their friends are still there. Have some connection, that would be kind of nice. Um, and that's all I'll say. And I really do appreciate all the input from the community.
There are a lot of similar points. Um, I just wanted to echo everyone in the outpouring of emails that we've received. I read all of them. I missed a response on one of them, I'm completely sorry. Um, I responded to all of them as best I could. And I was moved by each and every one of them. Everyone had a different story. Everyone had a, you know, the way that it was going to affect them. Um, it was great to hear from students and get their perspective, because I think that's, obviously, they're the ones who are going to be there. They're the ones that are going to be most affected by the masks, you know, the rule that we're making. They're the ones who have been most affected by this whole adopting world anyway. They have been in isolation. I might get worked up a little bit as well, because Dick and I have been on the board dealing with COVID since 2020. Police joined us and you all know, and I thank you all for coming, knowing what you were getting into. Although we did think that it was going to get better, that COVID was going to get better. And the Delta, like we said, is on the scene. I've read the reports, I've read the science. I have read many medical professionals who wrote in emails and who also kind of personally who have told me their stories, who work in PR and who started in 2020, fully masked and in a suit, and what they had to go through. I know a lot of feedback that I have gotten personally is that the board is just going through, we're just going to make this mask. Uh, mask, make all the kids mask, you know, we're, we're, this is a power thing, it's a political thing. I don't see that. I think everybody here is emotional about it. If I were just a parent, I, I totally understand wanting to let your kid go unmasked. My son is vaccinated, he wants to go to school without a mask on. But more importantly, he wants to go to school. And when I said, you have to wear a mask, well, you might wear a mask. And he said, yes, because he understands that we live in a household where we're all vaccinated and we're all above 16 and we don't have anyone in our family that is currently sick or immunocompromised currently. But he has friends too, that can, who have little brothers and sisters who cannot get passed. So we have to realize that we just don't live in a vacuum. Yes, if you want to think locally, think next door, think about the people who live next door and what they might be exposed to. And I don't think anybody wants to expose anybody to COVID or to any disease at all. Like, I think that's the worst thing. So, that's my perspective. If I was just a parent of a 16-year-old junior, I understand it. It should be, if it was a medical choice that just made sense to him and did not affect everyone in the surrounding area, then absolutely, you should make that medical choice. My daughter has made medical choices in medication, but it didn't affect her, her friends, little brothers and sisters. So I think that's somewhere where I'm coming from. I, I see all the slides, I see all the perspectives and I, and I know we all do in this room. I just want to reiterate that we made sure that public comment was open on Monday. We made sure, we made sure that people of all the families were able to join, made it by Zoom so that they could have that opportunity. We want to hear, we are elected representatives of this community of the parents, of the grandparents, of the great grandparents. We know everybody has opinions. We're the elect, you elected us, so we make the decisions. It's hard, really hard. It's been hard for a year and a half. So, I, I just wanted to put that out there. We all have COVID fatigue and frustration and I don't want to wear a mask anymore. I don't, I want this to go away, but I know that I have to wear a mask in order for it to be under control and to make sure that we are able to get those kids in seats. That's my perspective and my discussion.
Yeah, so I just have a whole question on this. Um, it's like, depending on what we choose, would that, like, just a question, what will that look like for, like, expectation for indoor and outdoor sporting events and events in general? Is there any thought on that?
To be honest, I don't know if it's our, our role at this point to police the stands, but uh, we're worried about having kids in school. And generally, it's not the kids in the stands. We do have student sections, et cetera, but pretty rare.
Right, it's not as amazing.
We really, this decision first has to be, what are we gonna do to run the school?
Right.
And outside of school, people have to make choices. Yeah, we have other guys right now, spectators, there's no limits, no mask requirements in the middle of the row. We would, what we would likely see is the vast majority of our community would probably wear a mask or stay within their families in the stands, but to police the stands during games is, I, I don't think we can do it if I.
Yeah, I just want to bring up one point, because I have been on the board for the last year. And I can say that at no time was masks being brought up to us in the entire last school year. All students spent all of last year wearing masks in school buildings. So it would not be a change for states to be masking. So I just, I want to highlight that point. It never came before the board, as, as far as I know, as far as I was aware, no parent contacted the board about it. Um, and no teacher or administrator let us know that there were any problems in the buildings related to the masking. Is that consistent?
Right, it was an order.
Yeah. And, and it was successfully done.
Yep.
So even in terms of, like, enforcement, it never came to the board as an issue. It came up in classrooms, I know that. In some of the classrooms here, kids were not wearing masks.
It's mostly inevitable, I know.
Yeah.
With the little kids, it does.
Some of the kids, you know, name one of others, you're wearing a mask, you're not wearing a mask, whatever. So there's that, that needs to stop, right? The ministry brought up by both sides of the voting, so somehow, it's hard, it's hard.
So, you want to go forward with, there's only three options and then discuss the three options?
Yeah, I think that's, it seems like everyone's.
So if you can, I think, you know, it doesn't have to be in any particular order, just list three of the options that are your preferences and I'll enter them all in here. I almost forgot. I'm going to when I put it up there. I'm just gonna pick out the words that I've already said.
Yeah, you want a colored one? Oh, sure. Oh, oh. Just ask, ask everyone. Substantial, I'd say.
Two is on there. One is on there. One, two, twice, two A.
I don't know. It's like one, two, three.
Do you got six to learn?
Six, that's cool. One, two, three.
Actually, I put three as only if I had a third choice. Four is on, one, two, four is on both. Alright, need to discuss two, two A and four.
Two, two.
Two, two A, sorry. Yep. I know. Give one to get it over.
What's it each of us got?
Two showed up.
Six times.
Anybody want to talk to, about two, if you want to talk about it a little bit? Anybody listen to? Two and two A, what kind of six times?
No, I just have a question. Is there anything in option two that's inconsistent with the, probably all the CDC guidelines?
Option two? The recommendation? Well, it would love to be required.
It would be then, whoa, that, right now, option two is still required for places. Yeah.
May change for vaccination. So, CDC does recommend, the first is capable, that's it. So, only option four meets the CDC guidelines.
CDC, they actually have one of those.
They, they're just saying mask period.
So they do not recommend that. To respond to, I think they adjust based on the level we're at all the time, so the guidance changes. So currently, everything is.
Is there anything you want to talk about? Q and A, or what stood out and why that's what you thought was appropriate?
Well, I mean, I'll say, I thought it was appropriate because, you know, we've got grade seven through 12 that have been able to be vaccinated. One week ago, I mean, levels were fairly low. Um, and again, I understand things are changing, but, you know, like I, and I recognize, you know, my kids are not of an age that they can get vaccinated. So, you know, I understand, I, I'm hearing the community and the concerns of the kids, the little ones that have, you know, the compromise and, and just those concerns. And so I understand why we're at the, gonna be required for K through six. That's where I'm coming from. And then in terms of the older kids, you know, I think highly recommend it that, you know, that, that gives them the option, if there is that concern, to, to wear the masks um, versus the, you know, the two A, which is required across the board. How substantial, I understand the concern, I just think there needs to be a little bit more flex.
So, the real difference between these three is the low and then a little bit high. So, in four, in low, master card period, verbal. In two, it's K six. And then in two A, it's also K six. So it's either, so both would have K six, two and two A have K six and low mask. Four has their own mask. Be moderate, the differences are in two, it would still be K six. In two A, it would be K 12. And then in four, it would be K 12. That's a good difference.
Yes. So I guess I just want to say, with regard to four, as Dick said, I feel like this landscape is gonna change so much that it is hard for me to feel like, in one of these options that we picked, I'm gonna feel great about in October or November. I mean, last year, the health department shut us down in November. So I guess, when I proposed option four, and, and Dr. Tenon has added this, I said it'll be revisited after vaccines are available for the under 12. I guess I just want to say, I feel very hamstrung by the fact that over half our population has not had an opportunity to be vaccinated. And I feel like I don't know that I in good conscience can go to support an option that sort of isn't protecting these kids. You know, the high schoolers have younger siblings, they're on buses together. I, I understand what you're asking about buses. I understand what masking on buses. I guess my point is, as a Dexter community, we do things for each other. And I guess I would like to, as a school board, say, we're all in this together until everyone can be vaccinated. And I say that after a four-minute conversation with my sister-in-law in Georgia today, about what's happening there. School boards are coming back for emergency meetings, changing policies after huge numbers of children are sick. I do not want to see that happen in Dexter. I want to stay ahead of this. We did a great job last year, and I want to stay ahead of it. As I only said, the kids need to be in school, and they need to be seated. And I don't personally know how I can tell a kindergartener to wear a basketball bib, and then let my 15-year-old say, you know what, it's okay, you don't have to. I mean, we can do this. We are doing this. We have been doing this, and we just have to keep on the force.
I think that, as I said earlier, no matter what side tonight, it's all going to be the same when school starts. Until some time, anything will change somewhat significantly. I guess I'd favor two, because it gives people some hope down the road. We really can do something different when statistics show that the things have turned around. I, whatever we vote for tonight, when things turn around, I'm sure we're going to see it. So, I don't have a lot of heart for it, one or the other. But I do like the notion of holding out some hope and optimism if there is life at the end of this house.
That was essentially my rationale for, like, two A. Was that there's, there's hope, we can get back to low, low is relatively normal. In, in reality, the way this disease progresses and its history of it progressing, we're not going to get back to low. We're not going to get back to low in terms of, I think it gives us the option. When vaccines are available for kids, and we have sufficient number in our community who have the chance to get them. Fully vaccinated, we have two weeks of vaccine, second dose. It gives us the option to, you know, maybe change things that. That's why I like two A, but as Dick said, we could revisit that any, any. I think the vaccine is probably going to change it, you know, if it comes this fall. It may affect the anniversary here. I'm not optimistic it's going to be very bad this first morning, basically. But it's possible, and I would love for it to, because I have a child that is nine years old.
I agree. I'd like option two A as well. And I appreciate your comments, please. But I do think that it's going to be unlikely. If we do, I would be super happy.
My thoughts are, two A gives us the best protection. And also gives us that light at the end of the tunnel. Where, you know, if we went to school a week ago, everything still would have been required, and we would have been fine as we find, stable in our guidelines for mask-wearing as we moved into substantial. So, I feel like, what I heard a lot of was stability and consistency. And. I feel most comfortable with option two A. For the coverage and where the light at the end of the tunnel. Or if that may be. See what else I can do more discussion?
Do you want to go and break down the two, or do you want? Next step we said is we break down two options.
I think we break it down to two.
Okay, so if you can, each picture two that you prefer.
It is very helpful to have this.
I make expressions. There you go.
Two A.
Four is definitely in two A, is definitely two, on a key of course. Something around the two A, four.
Do we want to discuss, or do you want to?
I would discuss so that you know, kind of, whenever we get to action, it would be motion. Whatever the first motion is, it's going to be a little yes, or a little no, or a word. I would discuss, so you know, it's what, off too much, whatever is. So, I want to talk about two. Sorry, two A. Two A, so two A versus four.
I'll speak to it from last time. I kind of like in favor of two A, because I think it does give that hope and plan and the title. And I kind of quickly say why I like two, so I'm going to ask for two A, because the way the transmission with the Delta variant, and also, the Delta variant, the higher transmission rate and the higher infection rate. And the type of case. So I want to go to A. The other one, two is, I want, so I want to puff it, you know, I want to just go from nothing to, to smite. So, and if it's trending downward to two, 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 it's still protect K six. I think we get that low truth that, you know, the, that probably it's kind of show with the mask that works, and hopefully vaccination, you know, at that time also, that's hope.
I agree. I, I like two A for that reason too, because it gives like that light, it says, you know, like, hey, if this is working, if what we're doing is working in a opposite of low, like they were this summer, just like they do with Cam Dexter, like, okay, now it's recommended, it's an option. But I think that was. That was nice. It was nice, and I'm hoping we can get there. I'm less careful, so.
Wouldn't just go down the line? You can pass if you want.
I, no, I have a couple of comments. I, I think that, you know, the need to protect the K six, definitely, yeah, that that it's a wise option to be masked and not at all. So. The low level we're, we're at before, so that's. It seems reasonable to me not to have the mask at a low level. For the whole kids that have been able to be vaccinated.
I'm just going to say that I will support whatever decision the board comes to. I appreciate that all of the decisions right now include required masking for K six, that does not have the option for vaccine. I, for my own conscience reasons, will be voting to support the CDC guidance. Because that feels comfortable to me, and because I feel like our community can do this, and I do believe in them. And I would like to see everyone stand up and mask for everyone. But I will support whatever the board has.
We said else for you, did one, I think it's somewhat academic. The low start won't figure out what you want to do in response to that. With two A, why, it's got to go all the way to low, it's not even moderate to the, we said here. So, I would hope to have it come up before it tears out.
Yeah. Agreed. I think it's, we're trying to check the low, the low states seem to have protection, layers of protection.
My concern is, mine is one, speaking from experience at an older, middle-aged, and younger. And when one gets sick, the other gets sick two days later. It's going to come home into the family. So, they don't have one as long.
Does it matter, right? I certainly, certainly want to take the old man.
I did say that you're free.
No, I, I am a friend of mine this.
We all.
Okay. We discussed.
And then you go to action.
We need to go to actions. So.
I move that Board of Education through option two A.
I second twenty twenty. Sorry.
I was confused about the double twenty twenty.
Yes, I understand.
Is it twenty twenty-one to twenty-two?
It's been a long three days.
Choice is we're going to return to it, that's twenty-one. Anyway, I second Christie Arnold's option.
Motion on the board is to approve the COVID mitigation plan of option two A for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Is there any discussion? So we want to do a roll call. Since it's on record anyway.
Whatever would help.
Mr. Albrecht?
I defer to A.
Mr. Arnold?
Hi.
Mrs. Burnley?
No.
Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Mrs. Cangis?
Aye.
Mr. Bungie?
Aye.
Mrs. Laura?
Aye.
So with the vote of six to one. Option two A. Is our COVID-19 mitigation plan. We are on to our second opportunity for public participation. This time, participants are allotted three minutes. And we'll try to keep it to fifteen minutes, however, if two will go a little bit longer. But we will cut it to a lot of three minutes. Those interested in making public comments via Zoom, please raise your virtual hand. And Dr. Tusk will call on you when it gets to the other room.
Actually, I might have to do it from here. I lost my link. Yeah.
That goes, that doesn't do.
Okay, if anybody in, on Zoom would like to make comment, please raise your hand.
And I'd like to remind you that if you spoke before, you cannot speak about the same topic you spoke of before.
Yeah. All right, we have Meg. Let me make sure I get the volume right. Meg, can you talk real quick, just to make sure I have the volume working?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear her or not? Oh, let me, give me one second.
Okay. Can you hear me now? So I should go ahead? Okay. Well, thank you very much for being, putting together such thoughtful options. I'm, I talked on Monday night as well, so I won't talk too long. I'm, I am very glad that you picked an option that will result most likely in masking being required against, across all grades. I have a high schooler. I do wish that if thing, just looking at the curves on, from the latest information. I encourage the board to consider option, you know, revisiting these options. Obviously, if things get worse, everybody will be masked because we'll be at the higher levels. But I personally would have liked option four. Because the kids did option four last year, and they did a great job at it. And I don't think my high schooler is going to be, you know, the light at the tunnel idea. I think that'll work with parents. I think kids can see what's happening. But that's just a minor comment. I do really appreciate the thought you put into this. And putting together a strong public health option, so that we can protect our young kids especially, and just make sure that we don't get some worse variant. I'm really concerned that if we don't stop, stomp this out now, we're going to have something even worse next year. So thank you very much. I'm very proud of Dexter School District tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Christie.
Hi, actually, my son David wants to say something.
Um. Thank you for voting to keep me safe.
Do you want to tell him how old you are?
I'm six years old, and I'm about to enter fast grade, and I'm really big.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Dave. That was all. Thank you.
Jackie.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello? Did you, can I view?
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I also spoke on Monday, and I just wanted to touch base on a couple of different things. I absolutely believe that everybody has a good intention and wants to do the very best. And along both sides, I keep hearing how everybody wants the best for their children, and I couldn't agree and believe in that more. I also would like to say that I had a couple of friends contact me and say, knowing that we have differences of opinion, say, that they vaccinated their children specifically so they would not have to wear a mask, and this is very upsetting to them, and they did not have a chance to speak. But the one thing I kind of wanted to say is, even though I know we're on different sides, if I were in charge and I were listening to so very many different polarizing opinions, I would have to say, wow, there is no one great path. I get that. And I know I will never make everybody happy, but I should try my very best to make it as feasible and workable for as many people possible. I would not mandate that there could be nobody wearing a mask because it might offend somebody or might cause bacteria to come and jump off somebody else. I would realize that other people like masks and other people do not, and that's why the CDC and the health departments and everybody else has their flickering information that goes up and down, and it's so that they can give the best information and also give some kind of guidelines. For a school district to take guidelines for our area that are given and try to add more to them, and then to basically say, we're going to mandate something, when having the step process that's already in place would allow for everybody to do exactly what they want and do what they feel is in their absolute best interest. Like I said, I wouldn't say you have to go without a mask if you've worn it for a year and you're very happy with it. I would never do that. I would say, how can I accommodate as many people as humanly possible? I would also like to state that I did contact the school and the board last year in regards to my son having so many issues, getting so far behind with the back and forth. So I can completely understand that we want to keep it as streamlined as I can completely understand that we want to keep it as streamlined as possible. We know things could change tomorrow, but I also contacted about my son's mask order from his doctor, and was completely shut down. So these have been addressed last year. I don't know why, it's not known, because it was very, very hotly debated throughout the year, with all the issues my son had, and with my daughter. So there should be nobody clueless as to why this wasn't brought up last year. But yes, to mandate something, saying that you're altruistic, thinking of everyone else, is a bit pompous, in my opinion. I understand that you're trying to come from a place of kindness and thinking of others, but you don't always know everything about others. And when you have it as a mandate, you're saying, I know more than you do. I know more than the health department, I know better, and that's not always true. So I wouldn't mandate you to be without them, just like you should not mandate my children or me to be with them. Thank you.
Tanya?
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to the board and for everyone that's commented. I feel like it's been a very thoughtful process, and my student was home-based all last year, and based on tonight's decision, I feel comfortable with her returning to school. And the other thing I would like the board to consider at some point is what we're going to do with regards to classes where students have masks off, and will we be able to maintain that three-foot distance, for example, in band class specifically? And knowing how crowded the, the stands are with the students being shoulder to shoulder there, even though it's still an outdoor setting, that, that does not mean that spread can't occur, especially over an extended period of time, as has been, you know, proven with outdoor concerts and such, so that's it for me, thank you.
Cassie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to give my daughter a chance to speak, if that would be okay?
Sure.
Her name is Elena. Thank you. Um, hi, I had my, I had my ninth grade shoot class last year, and I can't do it. She has a little bit of anxiety. To say that I am deeply disappointed in this decision tonight would be an understatement. I, I have lost all hope for this district, all hope. I, I don't even know what to say, except that I am extremely disappointed, and we will be searching other options, thank you.
Crystal?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, um, this is Crystal Zurich, I'm a teacher at Mill Creek, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to the board and to the superintendent for this plan, and for voting it through, because this has been very anxiety-producing as a teacher, and thinking about our students, and especially the ones that are not able to be vaccinated yet. And so I just feel a lot better going into the school year, knowing that we are going to be putting some really great safety protocols into place. I know that the school board and the district have been put in a really tough position, having to make these kinds of decisions, and I'm just really grateful that you all were thinking about the safety and the science and our students, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Kim? Whoops, Michael, I think I disappeared, hold on, Michael.
Hi, this is Lindsay, not Michael, but I just wanted to say thank you to the board and for all the work that you have done this entire process, is, it's been very transparent, and I'm, I'm thrilled with the decision tonight. Both of my kids were virtual all year last year, they did very well academically, mentally they struggled, but I think that's fairly typical, given the situation that we're all in. And I thank you for following the science and for considering everybody in the school district, not just one person or another. The good of the whole is much better than the good of the one, thank you.
Thank you. Craig?
Good evening, I just want to say thank you for the board on behalf of.
Well, that was, we're not hearing you real clear.
Uh-oh. Yeah, can you hear me now?
We did for a second, we heard the, can you, can you hear me now?
We'll start this out, go on to the next person.
Rhonda?
Um, just a quick note, I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm happy for the parents that their children have no problems with masks, but this is basically no consideration to the children that do. My son had headaches every day last year, he had to go on a prescription medication for the masks. And what's most disturbing about this whole meeting to me is that we spent so much time having a conversation about how we punish the children if their masks fall down. So thank you for your time.
Kim?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hi, my name is Kim Marinelli, and I have three children in the school district, two at Wiley and one at Beacon. We did virtual all last year, and my eldest was in fourth grade, and we actually had to pull her from the district, because even with the teacher, teacher's aide to help with virtual, it wasn't working for her. We have immunocompromised family members that we need to consider, and the fact that masks weren't mandatory from the get-go is concerning. The Delta virus, the Delta variant, is even more spreadable. We should be doing everything we did last year, and then a little bit more. And the fact that there's a, no real virtual option beyond, here's a computer, sit down, we'll see you again, and then when my kids get vaccinated, they can't return to the classroom? That is unbelievably disappointing and heartbreaking, and I really, really, really hope that you consider those of us who have to keep their children out and want to be a part of the school district, and to not make space for us, or not to leave room for us, is crushing, thank you.
Craig, let's try this one more time.
I apologize for the technical difficulties before, but I'm going to assume you can hear me now, we plugged in our microphone. I just want to thank the board for the thoughtful discussion tonight, and for the decision. My wife and I are thrilled, we're really happy for the community, we're happy on behalf of our son, who is going into first grade at Beacon, and we really appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you. Josh?
Hey, I just want to say, I appreciate the fact that you opened it up to the public like this, so we could see it. I recognize that our community is very divided. I also recognize that we'll be able to have an opportunity to vote again on, at some point, you know, who, who else goes to the board, who doesn't. I was a little disappointed in the result, I loved how we had a parent in the room that was repping at least another side, asking, would you even consider surveying the public? Felt a little bit like we were more placated, but there was openness there. I just wish that, that there was, there was more choice, but I understand it is a very difficult situation, and it's been said many times, probably no one would be happy with it. Disappointed in the end result, and we'll just see how we can continue to support our community the best way we can. I know we've, we've heard a lot of buzzwords about science and things like that. Last November, my wife, working as a physician for the University of Michigan Hospital System, got, got COVID through one of her patients, and I find it kind of silly to think that, that Dexter Schools thinks that they can do things and keep things safe better than the university hospital system. We, every time, we would always do what we were supposed to do to protect others and not be selfish, and we'll keep doing that. But I wasn't real thrilled with how the conversation went tonight, and yeah, thanks for your time, guys.
How are you?
Hi, Andrea again. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your thoughtful conversation and for your vote tonight. I really appreciate you guys taking the time and, and putting the kids first on this issue. I also just want to say, I really appreciate that you guys are giving up your evening to do this for us, and that you are putting in the time to be our school board members, and I just couldn't be more grateful for you right now, so thank you.
All right, that was the last speaker.
Okay. We are on to letter G, German. Thank you all. Sure.
So I guess I'm wondering, you'd be like, we're not going virtual.
Just to, I'll just make a comment, just, just to remind the community, Dr. Tinnis is going to send out a survey to see in light of our decision, how many residents would be interested in a Dexter teacher-led virtual option like they had last year? And if we have enough students, preschool grade, and teachers, we're going to try to offer that option.
But it would have to be early in time with staff, that's going to be a challenge.
Yeah.
You'd have to employ new staff. Yeah, absolutely, the challenge is if parents move back in in November or December, then what do we have the staff do? That's, I mean, and then maybe get to a point where we have to, we're already having a hard enough time staffing now, but if we have enough, maybe we can move people and try to make something work.
So that's that, I'm not sure with that doctors, what was I supposed to hear? But make sure that the staff and administrators know what they're looking, what they're looking for, and how they'll react to it, you know? So sort of that person called in.
The doctor smells that, the parent that indicated that your child was a doctor's doubt?
That's a good number.
Right, right.
You know, I just, I've seen this a lot, of course, and just make sure it's a good doctor, I'm sure it was. That person's not wearing masks, that they are small, protected. It could be close, but it could be close. See, parents may be very excited, the kids, impacting other kids, clothes and sports.
Okay, thank you all. We're good and bad, we do what? And with that, what's the?
People appreciate that.
We can pull a term. Thank you, thank you for the call, to respond to stuff to the community members, to all that are.